And how those performance indicators are measured by the end of this quarter, if possible. And of course, we can discuss offline. Council Chairwoman O'Willoughby, I think is referring to the reorg, which if you could explain a little bit more about what that is and why it will start in fiscal year 26, '27? Is that correct, Councilwoman?
I'm just, yeah, I was confused that it would actually take that length of time to do that. So maybe we're talking about two different things. We can have a conversation later on about it in reference to it, okay?
Yeah, there will be, just to provide some insight, there will be one position request that we feel we need inside of the department. And that can't happen until next budget. So I won't be able to have the reorg complete until I get a yea or a nay on that position. There'll already be some moving pieces. Already have program managed together. So the reorg is in the works now. But complete, done, will be when the budget is approved.
I get what you're saying. You're talking about positions and when they're funded again in the next budget cycle.
Chief, Rogue, you're standing and... Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to give a little bit of input here. So as you guys know, because of what we had to do with the former Department of Equity and Community Engagement, we made some additional moves and now everything exists under the umbrella of community development. And so what Cedric is not saying is that he just exists until next fiscal year, right? What he's going to do, and what we're already working towards, is figuring out how to best organize and optimize these new auxiliaries, to your point, Councilman Clark, for the remainder of this fiscal year, developing those objectives and those key performance indicators like you suggested, which I think is great. And then, as part of next year's budget proposal, we will present to you guys kind of a formalized view of this is how we think it could work best, given the raw materials that we've just been given through the previous reorg. Does that make sense?
That makes 100%.
Okay.
Sorry Cedric, you did a roundabout way of describing that, but you know, this is your freshman week, I guess, in being at the podium.
That concludes my questions for you regarding the expectation. And of course, we will continue to collaborate, to coordinate what that looks like. I just think it's important, and this is not just for your department, but for all departments. The state does this very well. And not only how we evaluate individual performance, but also how we measure if our departments are performing well and then to hold you to that standard. Because if people have questions and they say blanket statements like, "Well, I don't think they're doing well." Well, what are we measuring that against? What are the data points? What are the evidence-based practices? And so those are some of the things I'll be looking for as we continue this discussion about what key performance indicators are. And then we can use that data to determine what your budget looks like for 2027, right? Great. All right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just one question. Are you through?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Attorney, do we have an attorney-client today?
Not today, ma'am.
Okay. Praise the Lord. Okay, Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. and Madam Chair. I know one of y'all.
You are.
One of y'all chairs. Cedric, I do want to say thank you. I know you have, I said this again, I'll keep saying it. You have a tough job and a tough department that's been overlooked for a long time. And so at least from a council perspective, I am looking forward to figuring out how we can support you and the rest of all of your teams as best we can going forward as you're trying to put your stamp on it, make sure the administration has their perspective and their vision outlined on. I know it's not easy, but hopefully we can really get you guys the resources that you need so you guys can be successful. That's all.
We do appreciate that, Council. All right, thank you, Councilman Elliott. Well, that concludes our...
No, hold on, please.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Harvey.
That's why I have to sit there, because I can't see the board.
I know, Councilman Harvey.
Mr. Chair of it. Thank you.
Cedric, thanks for being here. I just wanted to put a bug in your ear. I'd love to chat with you offline about getting a community center out in East Sprainer in District 4, or making, what's that?
You can fund it, sir.
Okay. All right. We got commitments. No, I'm just kidding. Or making Heritage Park an actual community center. But something like that, would love to chat with you on doing that for District 4.
I support Councilman Harvey's request for that in East Sprainer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
In the budget as well.
Yep, okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay, council family, are you good? Are you good, Councilman Harvey?
Yes, yes, I think.
Anyone else? Okay, with that being said...
All right, well, that now concludes our committee meeting for community development. And we will stand in recess until 3:15 PM with no attorney-client meetings.
Absolutely.
Is motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Or to recess? Recession, so no adjourn, okay. We're good to go until 3:15.
Madam Clerk, will you read ordinance under first reading?
An ordinance closing and abandoning a portion of the unopened right-of-way in part of the unit block of Rose Circle, as detailed on the attached maps, subject to certain conditions.
District 1. Oh, okay, I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve.
So we have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you will read 8B. And these are in the great District 8. So if one of my councilpeople will make a motion to approve on that for me, I would really appreciate it.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a sanitary sewer easement in the 1600 block of East 3rd Street, beginning at MHS 146G020, thence southeasterly 290.3 feet to MHS 146G024, for a total of 290.3 linear feet, tax map number 146GH001, as detailed on the attached maps, subject to certain conditions.
We have a motion to approve with a proper second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you will read 8C for me.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a sanitary sewer easement in the 600 block of Vine Street, beginning at MHS 145D902, thence southeasterly 475 feet to MHS 145D823, for a total of 475 linear feet, tax map number 146AB001, as detailed on the attached maps, subject to certain conditions.
Have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you would do 8D under planning.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance so as to lift conditions from ordinance number 11615 of previous case number 20, I'm sorry, 2024-0154, from properties located in the 7500 block to the 7600 block of Magnolia Leaf Lane.
Councilman Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is Karen here? Yeah, there's Karen. Karen, would you mind reading what the conditions are to be lifted, please?
Yes. Sorry, the ordinance shows that they've been lifted. Let me read the conditions. Use of the property restricted to an approved planned unit development, maximum of 5.9 units per acre, and a hammerhead turnaround. Number 2 is shown on the attached site plan to be built at the end of North Joyner Road, type C landscaping along the south and east property lines. And number 5, all existing easements are retained.
Okay, very good.
Those are to be lifted and the ordinance does not have any more conditions for that rezoning, for that zoning.
Okay, very good. And the following resolution that we'll be looking at is to lift PUD conditions, right?
Is to abandon the PUD so that property would revert to its base zoning with no PUD and no conditions.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Karen. In that case, Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Oh, let me see, is there an applicant present? Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition present? Applicant, do you want to make a presentation? Okay, so Councilman Harvey, go ahead.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments? Please hit your like. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you will read 8E.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance so as to rezone part of property located at 5749 Lovell Field Loop from IH Industrial Heavy Zone to OS Open Space Zone.
Okay, is there applicant present? Thank you. Opposition present? I'll take Councilwoman Burr's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jack McAfee is with the airport and I asked him just to make a brief presentation. I mentioned at last week's meeting that this is an exciting project, not only for Districts 5 and 6, but for our community as a whole. So Jack, thank you for being here today and enlightening us on what's going on at the airport. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. Again, my name is Jack McAfee with the Chattanooga Airport. Had a few pictures to share. Just wanted to share a little history. Obviously, we got the, members of the community have always stopped along the airport, along the fence line, along the roads to admire the aircraft. In the 60s, we had the terminal observation deck that people could come and watch planes take off from the airport. But September 11th, we're not allowed to have people stop on the side of the road to watch aircraft. The new terminal closed down the observation deck. We don't really have a good area for the community at large to come in and observe aircraft. So we've always thought of having this park. It's located to the north of the airfield, on top of a hill that oversees the entire airfield. It's right adjacent to the runway to watch aircraft take off and land. And last year, the Blue Cross Healthy Places Grant application opened. We applied, we were awarded one of three out of 86 applicants. So we're incredibly excited about that. Received a $1.2 million grant, along with a $200,000 maintenance fund for the park. And it'll be designed by Impact Parks and PlayCorps will be involved as well. We expect construction to begin as soon as the rezoning is completed and expect it to be done in summer of 2026. Going through some of the pictures, you can see this is from above. We will have the World War II Memorial, which was taken down when our parking garage was constructed. It has been in storage since then. This is a good permanent home for it. It was dedicated to the Chattanooga Flyers World War II by the Chattanooga Flyers Club in 1946. We will have a covered pavilion, two playgrounds, one for younger kids and one for older kids, plenty of parking. And let's see. As you can see right here in this video, we're actually going to, this is kind of the part I'm most excited about. We're going to have a static display aircraft that was donated by a tenant who no longer uses the aircraft. And so I figured once a month, we could probably open it up to the public to go inside the aircraft, take pictures to see it. West Star, a partner on the airfield, they're going to repaint it to kind of the Chattanooga colors. And then, you know, just to kind of invite the whole community in, hope this park is very exciting, we might have food trucks as options, so in general, something we're all very excited about and just wanted to share, so. Any questions from either councilman?
I see no likes.
Yep, Madam Chair, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Can we have a motion to approve with the proper second, any questions or concern? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, thank you, Councilwoman Burris, that's gonna be nice. Madam Clerk, if you will read eight F.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at fifty-eight thirteen Lee Highway, from CC Commercial Corridor Zone to CR Regional Commercial Zone.
Councilwoman Burris.
Yes ma'am, the applicant is here, I don't know if there's any opposition, I don't think there's any opposition, but with her permission, we'd like to make a motion to defer this for sixty days, please.
Okay, the applicant is here? Raise your hand, okay, but no opposition? Okay, alright.
So I'd like to make a motion to defer for sixty days, please.
Okay, we have a motion to defer for sixty days with the proper second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, read eight G, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at seventy-four six Tiner Road, from RN two residential neighborhood zone to CC Commercial Corridor Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Is the applicant present? Thank you, opposition? Seeing none, Councilwoman Burris. Okay, we have a motion to approve with the proper second, any questions or comment? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, eight H, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter thirty-eight zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at two thousand and eight East Fourteenth Street, from RN one five residential neighborhood zone to CN Neighborhood Commercial Zone.
Is there applicant present? Opposition present? Okay, Councilman Elliott.
I'll move to the line.
Okay, we have a motion to deny with the proper second. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you will read eight I, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter thirty-eight, the Chattanooga zoning ordinance, as adopted by ordinance number one four one three seven on July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, to amend article XV-one-one, short-term vacation rentals, by amending the short-term vacation rental overlay district map and boundaries to include an additional area within City Council District Five.
Councilman Clark, that is in your district.
Uh, motion to approve.
So we have a motion to approve with the proper second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, the motion carries. Madam Clerk, eight J, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter thirty-eight, the Chattanooga zoning ordinance, as adopted by ordinance number one four one three seven on July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, to add clarity on additions in the Form-based code and refine minimum planting requirements for buffer yards.
We have a motion to approve with the proper seconds, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, now, motion carries. Madam Clerk, on the council office, if the council family has no problem, I would like for you to take nine A and B as a package.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Greg Taylor to the TIF Application Review Committee for District Three, for a term beginning on October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. B, a resolution confirming the appointment of Daisy Madison to the TIF Application Review Committee for District Nine, for a term beginning on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with the proper second, any questions or comment? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, on the economic development, item C.
A resolution stating the intent of the Chattanooga City Council to consider an economic impact plan authorizing a tax increment incentive to support public infrastructure improvements to assist the revitalization of the North Gate Mall area and to waive certain provisions of the city's policies and procedures relating to tax increment incentives.
Have a motion on the floor with the proper second, any questions or comment? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, D.
A resolution authorizing the city of Chattanooga to accept the electric power board of Chattanooga, quitclaim conveyance of any EPP interest in the tax map number one three five MC zero zero four on East Third Street with an assessed value of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, and to confirm the surplus of the property as recommended by Planning Resolution Number MR twenty twenty-one zero one nine zero.
We have a motion to approve with the proper second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, if no objection from the council family on the mayor's office, we will take item nine E through J as a package.
E, a resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's reapportment of Carl Henson, I'm sorry, Carl Henderson, to the Chattanooga Housing Authority Board for a term beginning on October eleven, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending October tenth, two thousand and thirty. F, a resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's reapportment of Benjamin Moore to the Tree Commission for a term beginning on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-nine. G, a resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Grace Buu to the Tree Commission for a term beginning on October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-nine. H, a resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Davian Hudson to the TIF Application Review Committee for a term beginning on October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. I, a resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Susan Gilmore to the TIF Application Review Committee as an alternate for a beginning, for a term beginning on October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. J, a resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's appointment of Krista Mariano to the TIF Application Review Committee for a term beginning on October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with the proper second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Is anyone present of the appointment and reapportment? Well, thank you for your service. Madam Clerk, nine K, please, under Public Works.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to enter a memorandum of understanding with New Terra Compost LLC of Wildwood, Georgia, for a poly-compost program to collect organic waste and divert food residuals from the land waste streaming utilization funds from the TDEC Organics Management Grant, with the city's matching funds for an amount not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Okay, so someone. Okay. We have a motion to approve with the proper second. Y'all was taking a little too long. Any questions or concerns? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Alright, then the aye has it, motion carries. Madam Clerk, nine L.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to enter a memorandum of understanding with Hill City Ventures LLC, DBA overlooked materials for a pilot curbside glass recycling program to collect glass recyclables and divert from the landfill waste stream for an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
So we have a motion to approve with the proper second. Any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Alright, motion carries. Madam Clerk, nine M.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to execute contract number T twenty-five zero zero, I'm sorry, zero two-two-two zero one, pressure pavement restoration with Donaldson Construction Company LLC of Cleaver, Missouri, for insulation of patent and propriety roadway preservation solution comprised of a multi-part hybrid roadway sealant and wearing surface that are still, sorry, that is installed simultaneously in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, seventy-five cents.
We have a motion with the proper second, any questions or concern? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, nine N.
A resolution approving a special exemptions permit for residential planned unit development amendment for an unaddressed property located in the fifteen hundred block of Mercer Street, and the fifty, one five four seven Mercer Street, subject to certain conditions.
That's in District Two. We have a motion to approve with the proper second, any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, nine O.
A resolution approving the abandonment of special exemptions permit for residential planned unit development by the adoption of the previous revolution, resolution number two four three zero eight, case number twenty-two thousand and four dash one five five, for properties located in the seven, seventy-five hundred block through the seventy-six hundred block of Magnolia Leaf Lane.
District Four. Have a motion to approve with the proper second, any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, nine P.
A resolution approving a special exemptions permit for residential planned unit development amendment for property located at one eight one three Old Wachatchee Pike.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with the proper second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. If you will have a look at our purchases, Mrs. Cowley.
Hello. Hello, how are you? I have two purchases recommended for approval today. Both are from Waste Water, the first one is a new blanket agreement for Emulsion Palmers for Waste Water. This will be a four-year agreement not to exceed one million, five hundred thirty thousand. The award will go to Solinas as the best bid for the city of Chattanooga. The second one, Waste Water has requested an increase of two hundred thousand dollars to agreement PA one zero zero four two nine for the purchase and installation of a replacement boiler. The new estimated annual spend will be three hundred eighty thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve with the proper second, any questions or comment? All in favor? Oppose? Alright.
I have two sole source purchases to report. The first one, both are for technology services, the first one is a new blanket agreement for Lightcast Developer, a web-based software product used to, used for identifying information on workforce availability. The platform shows hiring data and analytics to help with attracting workforce talent. This will be a two-year agreement with an estimated annual spend of forty-four thousand dollars. The sole source agreement will be awarded to Lightcast. The second one is a one-time purchase of office furniture for technology service. This sole source purchase will be from Officer Furniture Works as the authorized distributor for the southeast Tennessee region in the amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Thank you.
Counselor Van? We're good? Okay, we will move into committee reports. Councilwoman, I mean Councilman Henderson, I'm sorry. Councilman David. Councilman Harvey. Councilman Clark.
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have a report from our committee meeting earlier today. You look lovely, you're orange, by the way.
Oh, thank you, I know, I know, I'm looking just fabulous. I try.
Today, I want to note for the record, Crystal, that I requested KPIs and performance measures for community development by the end of the fourth quarter, which is in December. And that's our committee report for today.
And this oranges for a good juju for UTC, this is good juju.
Did you say UTC?
Alright, Councilman Elliott. Councilwoman Dotley. Oh, did you hit your light, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, the budget committee will meet next week to review and discuss budget projections and fiscal health assessment for the city of Chattanooga, research initiative from Councilman Henderson, so thank you so much, that is it.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Burris.
No report.
Alright, thank you. District Eight has no report, okay. So we've come to the session of the meeting where we will recognize persons that are wishing to address the council this evening, so please line up at the podium.
Is I come the only one?
Okay, Attorney Napoli, if you will read our rules.
Yes ma'am, at the end of each council business meeting, the chair will recognize members of the public who wish to address the council, and here's your rules. Each speaker wishing to address the council can only be recognized at the microphone up front for that purpose, can't have more than three minutes to speak, and you can address the council only upon matters within their legislative and quasi-judicial authority, and not on matters which are not under their authority or regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. Don't engage in any vulgar or obscene language nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others, and address your comments to the council as a whole and not towards individual council members. And lastly, do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting which is prohibited by Tennessee law. And someone commits that offense if a person substantially obstructs or interferes with a meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, please go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, I want to thank the council for the time today. The matter that I'd like to address does impact the city of Chattanooga, especially the development of the city.
What's your name and district?
I'm sorry, my name is Alexander Mandillo, and I believe I'm from the second district, I live in North Shore. This impacts the council, and this impacts the city of Chattanooga. It's an ongoing issue that I'm seeing, not just within the city, but throughout the whole state. If I can just make some references, if this is not the exact situation I'm here to address, but the other one in the city or in the area. There's a recent class action lawsuit with Sawani, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but it's a, the stated ask is thirty-five million dollars. It's regarding mold exposure, hence why the development of the city. I think it's important that the city council looks into these matters, and it's an escalating issue with many, many people involved. issue with many, many people involved and something that I'm not seeing anybody speaking about. This does impact myself because I received a terminal diagnosis from Dr. Anthony Alvatable in July of twenty twenty-three, this is here in Chattanooga, and I was acutely paralyzed from this exposure. Just to tell you the details, the leasing management refused to remediate the mold or even move me to a clean unit under the pretense that white people don't deserve help, it's important to note that I am not white. Two months after, or excuse me, for two months I was preparing my filing with the Human Rights Commission, city compliance officer Antonia Morgan helped me with this, she was the lead investigator over the, the case that sets the precedent, and I also know the family, Jason Lawrence Smith, who went through that process. That case law, or that case precedent was a settlement of twenty-four million dollars, and I'd like to read some statistics. Seventy-nine, this is from the National Institute of Health Library, seventy-nine percent of people exposed to Aspergillus at an exposure level of five hundred to one die within three to eighteen years. The Smith family case tested at seven hundred over one, that's the twenty-four million dollars they received for that. My case tested at thirteen hundred over one, and the Sawani case has been tested at twenty-two hundred over one. This is not regarding other agencies and other jurisdictions, but I have been in contact with the White House, now the DOJ. And Friday morning at eight AM, I had two FBI officers or agents come to my apartment and meet with me, not the moldy apartment, to gather this evidence because they think it's an ongoing issue that, and I'm here, that's what I'm here to address. I don't have anything else to say, I do want to thank you all for the time today, obviously don't have a lot of time to get into this, a lot of details to discuss, but I just want to thank everybody for the time and the forum to at least bring these matters to your attention. I love Chattanooga, I have met some really incredible, incredible people who are very hardworking here, and that's why I'm here to address this with you all, because I do believe that you are the people to help us and to address these matters, so thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hope Henchy, and I'm in District Seven, and thank you for everything you do, I love living in Chattanooga. I do a lot of walking around the city, in March I did an experiment where I walked a hundred thousand steps in one day, started at four AM, I just wanted to see what I would learn walking forty-three miles around our city. And the, I think one of my biggest takeaways from that experiment was how few grocery stores we have, and especially how few affordable grocery stores we have. I did a week without driving a couple weeks ago to empathize with our neighbors who don't have cars or can't drive for various reasons, the food city in, I think Rossville, is closing down, and if you look on the USDA Food Access Research Atlas, it shows low income and low access to affordable groceries, and Chattanooga is just really a food desert, and so I just beg for more access to affordable groceries. I looked up how to get to Aldi from my house, from where I live, I live at MLK and Riverfront Parkway, and I was trying to figure out, how do I get to Aldi without a car, because that's the cheapest place I know to get groceries. And there's one like at the foot of Signal that's three miles away, but there is no transit access to there, and so I ended up, I had to walk a mile to the nearest bus stop and then rode the bus for an hour to go to the nearest Aldi, so, and then walk, you know, carry my groceries a mile back to my home. So I just ask for, for more, more transit and more grocery stores in our town, I think we would all benefit from that, but especially for those of us without private vehicles. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dotley. That was all light, okay. Name and district, please.
Yes ma'am, my name is David Tullis, I'm the owner of Eagle Radio Network here in Chattanooga, and I'm the investigative reporter who covers law, and I'm very concerned about the health, safety, and welfare of Chattanooga police officers, particularly in their most dangerous encounter with the public. That is not domestic, domestic disturbance calls, that is traffic stops, traffic stops bring more fatalities and injuries to police officers than, than domestic disturbance calls and other types of encounters with the angry and upset public. I've given the city corporation notice today of my findings, long research, and also research I've done in my court case in the Sixth Circuit to end criminal traffic stops in the county. My suit is Tullis versus Bennett, it's on appeal, and today, Janie Varnell, the county attorney, said that my research brief was very thorough, and whether I lose or not is immaterial, the point is that the notice tells the city corporation how to deal with obstreperous or wrongdoing people on the road behind the wheel. The law of the driver's license is under privilege, there are four main elements that, that I would bring to your attention that are in the notice, four parts. One is privilege is on commercial activity. Number two, privileged disputes on that privilege of driving or operating a motor vehicle are heard in the Department of Safety and Homeland Security. The commissioner has the authority to prosecute or administer the privilege and wrongdoing under it, and that's called having a contested case. Traffic cases are to be heard administratively, effectively in Nashville or in the local branch of DOSHS. The third element is the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act, which controls the operation of privilege administration or management. Plumbers are not arrested, hairdressers are not put in cuffs by your officers, they're, they're heard in the cosmetology and barber board, they're not, these are not crimes to not have the comb in the gym aside long enough, that's a, that's a privileged offense potentially. So the third element is that traffic cases have to be heard in administration under that authority, the UAPA Title Four, Chapter Five. And then finally, the exhaustion of administrative remedies controls also. When I was falsely arrested for a damaged tail out by the county, I insisted that I had a right to a hearing administrative in Nashville or in DOSHS prior to anything, any adjudication in criminal jurisdiction. I'm looking out for police officers in my litigation in the county, and I'm urging the city to adopt the law, recognize privilege, recognize, UAPA, recognize the exhaustion of administrative remedies as the remedy that the people have as against prosecution by the state. Thank you so much.
Do we have anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? Seeing none, hold on, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn with a proper second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, we are adjourned.